It is seven P M. I call this February sixth, twenty twenty-three Board of Supervisors Budget Session to Order. Gentlemen, tonight, first item, approval for electronic participation by board members.
Motion to approve electronic participation by Supervisor Greenwood due to a personal matter out of town and Chairman Hodges due to a temporary medical condition.
Second.
Motion made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Muscalski?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Greenwood is not here yet. Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Chairman Hodges?
Hi.
Mrs. Branch, could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Muscalski?
Here.
Chairman Hodges?
All right, but tonight, Mr. Garber's chair.
Like, it says, it says real nice, too, Bill. Uh. Tonight, we have an amended agenda. Uh. If everybody's had a chance to look at it, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
We've approved the agenda, sir.
Second. Okay, properly, motion properly made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garber?
Hi.
Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Muscalski?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Okay, work session matters. Item five A, update on recreational plan, Hill Studio.
Hello, this is Greg Webster. And I want to do audio check. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Yeah, yeah. Great. All right. It's a pleasure to be here, members of the board. Um, I promise you, I will not be as long-winded as I was, uh, last month. Um, I have an abbreviated update presentation I, I will show you, but I think the most important thing is, um, you all had a couple of questions last time, one being a couple of questions about the, uh, the loop road in the park. And then, um, some costs and, and implementation strategy. So, uh, with that, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and jump in here. Um. Screen shared here. And if you guys can confirm, you see my screen?
We do.
Awesome. Okay. All right, um, you're gonna see some slides in here that are, uh, redundant from, from last time, but really as just a refresher. Uh, in case you have any questions, we can, we can definitely go back to, uh, to some of those, those items. Um, this is the, uh, recreational park, uh, master plan. We made a few revisions, uh, from last time. One was, uh, switching out the tennis courts to pickleball courts. And then, uh, the next slide, uh, I wanted to get into, uh, the vehicular circulation, which, which was a couple of questions from, from last meeting. And this diagram shows, uh, in blue, uh, what would be considered one-way, a one-way loop, and that's really just to, um, make the width of, of the park loop road more efficient. Uh, there are a couple of tight spots, um, up here on the, the north end and then over here on the, the east side where, we're really butted up against the, the property there. Um, but given all the, all the data and the information we have, uh, we think we can make that work. Of course, when this does come to fruition, hopefully, uh, we can get a, uh, a real engineering survey and, 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 um, get down in the nitty-gritty as, as to how much space we do have, but we do have room to make some adjustments there. So, uh, the idea is that you, you come in off, off the main road here as a one-way entrance, and you can park at an angle, so that would definitely save you some space. And that would be parking at an angle just on the one side here by these two, uh, baseball fields. And then, as you get deeper into the park, you can have angle parking on both sides of that, that one-way street. And then you can move back to, uh, angled parking on, on one side where, again, it gets a little closer to the, uh, the property line. And then the red dotted line indicates where we could do two-way travel, uh, and, and a two-way entrance and out at this new entrance, uh, here. Um, so as the one-way comes around, it would turn into two-way as you, as you, um, circulate through these, these, uh, parking, larger parking lots here, here, and then down to the center. So we think this will be a, a much more efficient way to move traffic around the park in a, in a more safe manner. Um, the next slide, I just want to show you real quick, um, in the section, kind of graphically, what, what this may look like. Um, so as you come into the park, if you look to the right-hand side here, uh, you see the one-way road, which, which is, uh, approximately twelve feet wide, uh, and then an angled space, which is approximately nineteen feet wide. And he, here's the property line here. Uh, and, and again, this is a graphical illustration of what this may look like. This is not based on any kind of survey, uh, data. Um, and then a picture of, you know, wh- what that might look like, and here's an example down here. And as you move further into the park, you can have, uh, angled parking on both sides of that one-way loop and to your, uh, uh, to your left side of the screen, you can see, see how that works, where you have nineteen-foot angled parking on both sides of a, a twelve-foot, uh, one-way street. And again, here's a picture of, uh, what that would look like here. Um, and, and so before we presented this, uh, more or less a feasibility study of, of what, uh, a, a, a rectangular ball field, multi-use ball field, complex would look like and what, what could be in, entailed in that. Uh, in, including parking, playground spray pad, ball courts, picnic pavilion concessions, um, and of course, the fields. And then I talked about, uh, the, the wedge park, which the county owns here. It's, it's, it's all wooded space and how that can be, uh, a integral part to this neighborhood and, and integrate some wooded walking trails and, uh, include some greenways, and all of this would be tied back to the rec park. So you really have this nice connected, um, uh, park and, and, and greenway, uh, system. And then I talked about, you know, Sandy Point and some of the improvements that could be made there, a, and just how to move around that park in a more, uh, safe and, um, uh, a, a better manner, uh, by getting vehi- vehicles up to certain points in the park where you could utilize some of those features and even include some new features, uh, in that park and, and, and designate, uh, non-hunting corridors through that, through that area, uh, for, for people to experience the park in a more, more safe, uh, manner. And then I went to a series of slides that showed, uh, how you could really make, uh, King William County this destination for water trails. Um, having, you know, a series of improved landings and a, and a signage system that, that would show different, uh, uh, put-ins and take-out points, uh, with designated miles and, and just, uh, a range of, of abilities, uh, of different types of water activities and, and links, uh, that, that could be included there.
You didn't include the ones that already exist in West.
I, I'm sorry, say that one more time.
You did not include the two that are already there in West Point.
In West Point?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, and that's something we can amend and, and include in our final, uh, document. Um, and, uh, and I, I'll get to more of that here right at the, uh, end of the presentation, but yeah, that is a good point that we can, we can add that so that you can incorporate West Point into this overall, uh, water trail plan. Uh, the, then I had presented, um, uh, some improvements to a piece of property that would be, uh, uh, best for a shooting facility and, and types of things and, and improvements you could include in that facility that, that would, uh, that would, that would be fun for, for, uh, shooting activities, archery, small arms, uh, rifles, and so forth.
And property was that there that you used to?
Uh, I'm not sure what the name of that property is, but it's, it's a elongated piece of property off King William Road. Um.
Transfer site, um, with the land, what we call landfill site.
Where the sheriffs are now using.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, that's correct. We're the, yeah, we're the sheriffs are currently using. Yeah. And so since the last meeting, we, um, we kind of broke all this out and determined, uh, you know, based on, um, you know, lo- logical ways to, to kind of, you know, break this up and, and construction, uh, logistics and how to, how to make this work and, and, um. So on the left-hand side here are the, are the different areas I had mentioned, the rec park, the, the wedge neighborhood park, the multipurpose, uh, fields, uh, sports complex. Um, the, the watercraft landing areas, which would make the water trails, and then the sport shooting facilities. That's on the left-hand side, and then on, across the top would be the implementation, which you could, um, implement, uh, year one, uh, year, uh, within the first five years, years, um, five through ten, ten to twenty years out, and then even twenty-plus years out. Oops, sorry about that. Um, and so we, we broke those up into, like I say, different components. So, for example, the first year for the rec park, uh, you might include, uh, irrigation on some of the, the ball fields, improving the batting cages, adding batting cages, uh, updating some of the, the existing fields, converting the tennis courts to pickleball. Um, and then a cost associated with, with some of those items there. And even, uh, some other improvements you could do in that first year as well related to, uh, the watercraft landings. Um, and so a- as you go through each, each, each segment, uh, each one is broken up into, um, what we would suggest as, as, uh, implementation for that year. And now as time moves on, of course, and, and funding, uh, availability, um, occurs, you know, that can change, but th- this is, this is kind of to, to help to get the ball rolling and, and think about and, and start to plan, uh, for the future.
Don't you think that you probably should have had the parking lots first?
Well, they, they are, um, actually, within the first five, ten years, um, again, I think a lot of that is just getting the funding established in place. Now, like I say, some of these things can be shuffled around, so depending on, um, you know, if, if the county had, currently has funding to do, uh, certain aspects of the park, that obviously, yes, could, could be moved further up front, definitely.
Mr. Hodges?
Yeah.
You are, you are correct. That is a critical need right now.
It's a biggest component, uh, other than maybe restaurants that I know of.
Yeah.
Well, you, uh, myself and, and Mr. Moran were up there twice and.
Yeah.
And parking was tough.
Yeah, it's, it's real difficult.
Yeah. But we can, we can make those changes and include that in the final document, absolutely. Um, and just ship that, ship that over, uh, probably in the year one to five, um, if that makes sense. We can definitely do that. Any, any further questions on, on probable costs? And of course, we make our best guess, you know, assuming that you've got three percent inflation per year, but we don't, we all know how that's been the past year, right? So. And then, uh, we've included contingency, uh, ten percent, and then, of course, uh, including, uh, design fees with that.
If I'm guessing right, it looked like about six million. Is that about right?
Six million for the, the park?
Top row, yeah.
Yeah, 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 for the rec park. At least that's, that's what we're estimating, uh, all the way out through, you know, completing, say, the mountain bike part, part of that, uh, part of that master plan. And then, uh, I wanted to include this slide again. Um, you all had seen it before, but it's just a, uh, a, a list of all the, uh, some different types of grants, um, a, in or loans that, that could be sought after. This obviously is not a, uh, all-inclusive list. Um, there's, there's things, hundreds of, of things out there. It's just a matter of searching for them. But we wanted to, uh, make a list of, of those that we think are most relative for what we've, we've planned out. Um, and of course, as this project moves, moves forward, we can, uh, we can definitely help, uh, apply for some of these grants and provide the information that's needed to, to, to get some of those funding op- opportunities. Um, so, so with that, uh, are opening up any questions, comments? Anyone has?
No requests. Again, it's an ambitious plan, um, for sure. Uh. We're gonna have to be creative, I think, in identifying some funding sources to do all of this. Um. But I think, uh, it, it's a good start and, and a very comprehensive plan, um, which you need to identify what our upfront priorities are and how we're gonna get those most important things done as quickly as possible.
Absolutely.
I can tell you, I'm a member of the Boston Rec, uh, Commission. Uh, many of them are here tonight, and they are very excited about the plan. This is actually generational, you know, it's maybe twenty years down the road. It, it could really be something special. It's not gonna happen overnight. But, uh, thank you.
The, the layout on the baseball fields, are they what is present?
Yes, that's correct.
Uh. They have, and I had something I don't know. It, it, it looks like many parks I know of that a lot of foul balls are gonna be going into the other field. Is that correct?
Uh. Yeah, I guess if you don't have particular outfield fencing, um, but our, our design was, was not to change any of that, that current layout, only to, um, s- save a little bit on expense. We, we didn't see any, any objections to the current layout, and they actually think those kind of work out in, in terms of, of grading and, and citing. Um, if you do start moving those things around to prevent that kind of thing, then you, your cost really can skyrocket by the time you've got to regrade and, 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 and move things around.
Okay.
But I, I do know there is fencing out there, uh, for that type of need, if, i- if, if, if that is necessary, absolutely.
Do we have any sense for how many claims? If there's a broken windshield or something, is that the personal responsibility, or can they file a claim through the county?
No, unless it's changed, it's, it's person. That main ball field there back, back in now, the many cars were hit, many windshields also.
Every ball field that I've ever attended, i- it was on you.
Oh, yeah.
You know, to take care of the glass.
Any more questions? Yeah, I think we do have fencing in our, our costs, at least accounted for that, where, um, you have fencing, you know, just on this back, back to, uh, back two sides to mitigate that, that type of thing.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate, uh, every, everyone's time. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, five B, Department Budget Presentations, Natasha Brown, Director of Financial Services.
Good evening.
Good.
Hi.
Can you hear me, Mr. Hodges?
Oh, yes.
Alrighty. Good evening. Tonight's budget presentations are from the department heads' requests. As with the previous presentations from last week, this is a placeholder, there is a placeholder built in each department for a fifteen percent increase in health insurance. The anthem rates are anticipated to be received in March. Overall salary increase requests include a one-point-five percent merit and two percent COLA. First up tonight is the regional animal shelter. The overall increase for this department is ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight. This would increase King William County and King and Queen County shares for operating expenses from one-hundred-sixty-three thousand, five sixty-four in FY twenty-three to two-hundred-fourteen thousand, five oh eight requested in FY twenty-four. That would be an additional five, fifty thousand, nine hundred and forty-four from each county. The FY twenty-four request includes cost for administration of two new programs, community cat management program and animal foster care program. The increased request is due to the filing, salary and wages increase for an individual full-time employee, an animal shelter program coordinator, and reclassification of one existing full-time employee from animal care tech to animal care supervisor. Also, an increase for part-time employee annual salary in, expense line for holiday pay and merit and COLA increase. Office supplies for the purchase of two lateral cabinets needed, and due to the demand and intake numbers increase, there is an increase for food supplies, medical lab supplies, and laundry housekeeping supplies. Repair and maintenance increase for purchase of a new washer machine and dryer. Vehicle fuel and other operating supplies include additional costs for the new program administration. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Betts to, to the podium to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
How are you?
Members of the board? I'm well. How are you all?
Good, I could see.
Questions?
Uh, I have a question on page, uh, twenty-nine. Is justification for changes, are they? Is this just our share, or is this, um, King and Queen included?
Um, this budget is for both counties.
Okay.
You can pay it now.
Yeah, page nine, okay.
Right.
So each of these figures would be half of the cost to King William?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they split the budget, um, right down the middle.
Are the employees, are they King William County employees or King Queen County?
They're King William employees.
Are we carrying the entire cost on that?
They pay half of the salaries and fringes for employees. King Queen does.
Well, they pay fringes, too.
Yeah, well, they pay half of our budget, so.
So they, they, they're on our H R.
Okay, yeah.
So they also share any, any capital, uh, improvements?
Yes.
And I forget exactly what page it's on, but you mentioned that we could be fine for not having that wellness room. Uh, you brought that up one time before, about four years ago, and I never got a state code that requires that from you.
Um, well, you're talking about the sick room.
Yeah.
Um, the state law does require that every shelter have an isolation area or a sick room to keep animals, sick animals, isolated from healthy animals. Um, our shelter was not built with a sick room. That was an oversight on the architect's part because it's in the state law that shelters have to have them. So at the last minute, we had to turn a room that was designed as a puppy room into a sick room, so we had somewhere to put animals away from healthy animals. The problem with this area is that it is four small dog kennels. You all have some pictures in your packet. I think they're a little bit degraded, but what the pictures show is that they are four small dog kennels with the six-foot chain link. Um, and so it's not ideal for housing cats, and we had to top off the cages so the cats couldn't escape if we had sick cats in there. And this room, the HVAC system is shared with healthy animal rooms, so that's a problem. And the cages are only four feet apart, so if you have an animal that's coughing or sneezing, and you've got another animal across from it that's also sick, you're not doing anything to contain any viruses. So this room has been a problem, um, since the start, and we've just been doing the best that we could with it.
And is your policy still that if anyone I know for a canine, uh, wants to adopt, they've got to keep it in the house?
That they have to keep it in the house?
Yes.
Um, well, the adoption rule states that it's placed as a household pet. It doesn't mean it has to stay in the house twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah, does that include cats?
Yes, they're placed as household pets.
Uh, you've given us a comprehensive packet here, uh, with lots of good information that, that I think answers any, any possible question that, that I had as I was starting to go through it. By the time I got to the end of it, it was answered. Um, you know, I think it's just a matter of, um, like everything else, we're gonna see what, what we have to work with and, um, and make those decisions that, that we as policy makers have to make, but I do appreciate, uh, you know, very much the, the level of detail that you went through in here, um, explaining every request and detailing the, their responsibilities. The one, when I was initially going through it was, well, what's the difference between, you know, your, the, the reclassified position? You wanted to great detail on
Right.
what the difference is. So I appreciate that, thank you.
And so far this year, everybody that's presented has really done a good job justifying what they're asking for. But I really appreciate it. Bill, anything else?
I just, I just wanted to make a comment real quick about the, um, survey, the community survey that we did online. And I believe you all got, it might have been late, but I think you got some pages from that in your packet. And, um, what's remarkable to me is the answers regarding the importance of our current programs and services was overwhelming. And, you know, five is the best response. We got five on everything, and we're talking about the current programs of the care of strain-on-wanted pets, relinquishment, adoption, low-cost pain neuter, animal rescue partnerships, pet food pantry, community ca- uh, education and cat management. And then the response of the importance of improving or expanding services and calendar year twenty-three or FY twenty-four was again overwhelming. Um, which tells me that this, this community wants us to do every, everything that we can, um, with proactive programs and services to lower the numbers of animals coming into the shelter through proactive programs like Spain and neutering and foster homes. Um, so that was just remarkable to me.
I'll say one more thing. When I was floating that petition around, I stopped at a fellow's house. He had just gotten a Border Collie rescue, and everything he said was great.
Oh, he got it from us?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and since he adopted that dog, he's been volunteering once a week.
Yeah, he's a great guy.
Yeah, yeah.
That dog has a good heart.
Yes, he does.
But thanks a lot.
Okay.
And thank for your presentation.
All right, thank you all.
Next up is me, my finance team.
Natasha.
Yes, sir.
Before you continue, do we present some of this stuff to King William County? I mean, King Queen County?
Yes, yes, we've already submitted it over for their budget information, and I did talk to Robin Botstick earlier this week, too. And she actually will go over to King and Queen and present her budget request for, um, victim witness.
Okay.
So we are, we're wait, they're, both Lori and Robin are going to keep me updated on what the response is from King and Queen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
So the finance department, um it's level funding, uh my increases are for merit cola. And the incre- the potential increase for health insurance.
Okay, there's a big.
Yes.
In all departments. How much was it fifteen percent?
Fifteen percent placeholder, we have not had any increases for the last two budgets. Well, I think the this past year was, there was no increase and the one before that was very little, so.
What what kind of figure is fifteen percent?
Uh, this just a rough idea, um neither and I came up with a, you know, just a placeholder for that value to look forward.
I think, I think Mr. Hodges probably means overall.
Yeah.
Oh.
Throughout all uh departments.
I'd have to do some calculations for the entire department, but I can get that information to you.
Is that what you meant, Mr. Hodges?
That's exactly what I was talking.
Not a problem, I will get that to you.
Any other questions?
Should make in yours either.
Well, not quite, uh she still hadn't told me where we're getting all this money.
It's falling out of the sky in West Point.
Yeah, okay. We we have a lot facing this, y'all all know that. And and a lot of increases and some of them aren't going to be met, I mean, it's just simple as that.
Right. Okay, the next one up is human resources in the payroll department. Human resource and payroll was separated from the finance department beginning in FY twenty-three, the increased request for FY twenty-four. Is due to increase of salary for payroll specialists to reflect the increased duties with grant reporting. And a level of service provided for payroll and benefits to the staff. Additional funds for professional service to cover costs of new com- compensation study to be completed by a professional vendor. Also, an increase of OPEB report to cover the cost increase from the vendor. I'll now invite Ms. McIntyre, Mrs. McIntyre to the podium.
Hey.
What kind of questions do you have for me?
If we.
We, well, we just got this tonight, I really haven't looked at it, I think it was on our.
I turned it in in December.
So I I don't have any questions myself.
Um, just it, just to help you go through, um the biggest part of that forty-one thousand that you see. Is a placeholder for the comp study, that's thirty thousand dollars of that. So if we choose not to have a comp study done by a professional company, that would go away. Um, and then the majority of the remainder of that would be the forty-five hundred for health insurance um that we're guessing. As well as the um four thousand for the OPEB, which is the post-employment benefit that we are required to do. For the audit every year, so.
When when's the last time, I know it was in my lifetime here, but when is the last time we had a professional compensation set up done?
It was before my lifetime here.
Okay.
Um, I believe it was maybe twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Um, if I remember from papers that I found.
Is it a requirement to do it?
No.
It's not.
No, I mean, we, you know, we, whenever we're recommending salaries or adding positions or changing positions. I usually consult with either other counties, I look online, um our NeoGov where we have our applications now has a. Feature where you can pull every other locality that also advertises with them to see what they're paying for that similar position, so. We have a lot of information available to us, just we we haven't done it um professionally in a while, that was just a consideration if y'all were interested.
Well, let's see, let's 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 um. Keep an open discussion about that, dude is, I know that just about anytime you hire an outside professional firm, thirty thousand dollars is the cost to for them to walk in the door. So um that probably makes sense for a placeholder.
There were three that I spoke to, um two of them were in the thirty thousand dollar range, one of those two was already doing a study with. Um, a couple other localities in our region that were similar inside. That they would give us a little bit of a discount to to piggyback off that if we did it, you know, in the next year or so. But again, that that was after talking to a couple of companies. If you come up with questions, you all know how to contact me.
Any, any more questions, Bill?
No, I don't have any.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Information, uh information technology department continues to grow. We brought IT in-house several years back and continue to make progress keeping up with technology. And FY twenty twenty-four, we will begin breaking out the cybersecurity expenditures from the IT within the department. The request from IT reflects the request to promote the current part-time position to a full-time. You will note that telecommunication costs, except for departmental wireless costs, have been moved to the IT department. We also have moved from prior year's capital request of ten thousand each year into the department's expense line. Straight from the general fund for expenses relating to upkeep and updates to servers, computers and software. Under cybersecurity expenses, the part-time position salary is listed and the cost for cybersecurity has a separate lineup. I'll now turn the podium over to Mr. Wolf.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, how are you? I do it with all of them.
Any questions?
Uh, the Telecommu- Communications Administration be twenty-eight thousand, eight seventy-eight, maybe I should know, what is that?
So that is um, N- Natasha could probably explain it better than I can, it's the cost that the county pays for. The telephone system, it has been broken up over all the different departments prior to this year. And now that we actually have an IT department, it felt best to just start bringing everything that connected to the network under the IT department. So that, those dollars will reflect a reduction in other departments and it's just moving it from one place to another.
And Travis, can you go over your part-time employee as to how many hours, I know we discussed this already and and the need?
As in currently how many hours he's working?
Yes, yes.
So um he currently comes in from eleven-thirty to four-thirty or five uh every day. Um, he sometimes stays later depending on shift change for the sheriff's office if they need any additional help. His exact hours I can't tell you, but I know that he's, uh whatever the maximum is that he's allowed to have. Uh, to maintain. Part-time statuses is what he's doing. I guess to to further talk about, you know, the need to have him on for full-time. Um, for the last few weeks, Percy and I have been talking and working through uh hours that I spend on my day and week. And. Between eight o'clock and eleven-thirty when Todd shows up. I'm running help desk and different calls, I'm averaging about fifteen hours a week uh doing help desk calls.
Questions? In a, in the IT world and certainly cybersecurity, recurring training is critical, or where's the budget for that?
So currently, um our part-time person has taken on some training on his own. He is about to finish his CSCA certification, um he started that prior to coming to the county. He's looking to take a slight break after the three years of taking the certification and then that will be included next year. Also, Mr. Ashcraft is allowed, I forget the exact amount of of hours of training per department per person uh that we utilize.
And cybers, cyber services twenty-seven thousand, that is um things that we subscribe to.
Yes, sir.
Contract with, et cetera.
That, the bulk of that is for Qualus, which is the software that we have purchased. Manages all of our devices, patches, updates, vulnerability scanning, the reports that um. Then is able to pull out of the system.
It's more, just to clarify, the um training is usually found in the combined with travel and convention budget line.
Oh, the healthcare costing included in here, I think it is, but.
Yes, sir.
About six lines down, six and seven lines down. Yeah, I saw that, I was making sure that that increase was for that position. So are you, is that all it is for the insurance for the whole year? Thirteen hundred and twenty-eight dollars, that sound right?
I think you're on the wrong line.
Yeah, I'm off one line, thirty-three hundred, right?
Right.
That's the, that's the increase.
Yeah, and that's what, two employees?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Well, eh, wait a minute. Who are you paying the insurance on now?
Just me.
That's what I thought, that's what I was getting at. So it'll actually be more than that one. This is probably taken into consideration for a second, full time.
Yep. Okay.
So we're wondering then, Ms. Brown, if help care costs have been calculated for the additional full-time positions?
Anyway, I I gotta say that it it appears to be to me a need for this uh this full-time position from a part-time.
It is, it's calculated, but um assuming that we hire a full-time person and they um. Participate in a ba- I mean, a single plan.
Okay.
Any more questions?
I don't.
Does this reflect the uh the potential of getting the secondary broadband services here when it becomes available?
No, sir, we have not been given any information on that yet, from a pricing standpoint or an actual timing standpoint.
It is a goal.
Absolutely. My goal is if it works out the way we would like for it to, it would become a primary. And then our current primary would become a fail-safe. And basically a metered. Type contract with them, so if we need it, it'd be, it is obviously in place. If we. Lose our primary and need to go back to the secondary, we would pay for what we use rather than its services being here continuously, so that makes sense.
What's their uptime then? Or downtime?
Current primary?
Yeah, for the primary, um pretty stable.
Outside.
Except for the cut line cuts.
Outside of the cut lines, we've not lost internet since it's been installed, outside of the cut lines there in Route thirty. And I'm sure y'all are aware, but just in case you're not, we do have uh two lines coming in. Single line comes all the way down thirty, once it gets to just past the post office, one line comes down Porcelaining Road. Terms into this building. Another line continues across pound thirty, comes across where the church is and ends up in the sheriff's office. So we actually have two, so for some reason on either campus location, the line was to get cut. Yeah, we pick up. Now we're at the mercy of people on Route thirty coming from Central Garage because it is a single line coming all the way down.
Thanks, any more questions, Bill?
No.
Thanks, Sean.
How are you?
Thank you.
Mr. Hodges, I did a a real quick calculation, it's roughly a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for that fifteen percent placeholder on Anthem.
Alright, thank you.
The building department reflects an increase for the following. Request for additional full-time position as a permit permit GIS tech. Transfer of salary line from general properties to the building department. And a request for the cost of building portal for contractors access. I'll now invite Mr. Milton to the podium now to for for further information.
How you doing?
Evening, gentlemen.
Mr. Milton, I I think I have this correct, we're looking at maybe a hundred and two thousand dollar increase in salaries and wages, does that sound right? Or did I write that down wrong?
If we hire a new person to take the GIS off of my permit tech's hands, like I'd like. And.
And also, with Ms. Brown mentioned that uh there is a a salary that would move from general properties. To the building department, that is taking up a large portion of that one hundred.
Yeah, just it jumped out and, okay. Questions?
Good to be busy, right?
It's been busy, yes.
You're, you're a single point of failure, Chris.
Say again?
I'm sorry. You are a single point of failure.
Yes. Mr. Hodges?
Not at this time, uh like y'all said earlier, it's still going to be a lot of questions come up as we go through. The whole system and the budget.
And and just FYI, just whenever just to to see, because if you don't have the page itself, I said, it's it's effectively seventy-five thousand dollars is moving out of general properties on. To to hit budget. Again, that salary line jumping out at everybody is is one of the particularly larger increases, that's the main reason for that.
Thanks.
And and well, let me just throw one, how do you feel? The uh project that we just approved is going to affect your department, I think it's close to seven hundred units.
Uh, well, that probably won't be kicking off immediately, um and there has been a slowdown in. The residential side of building, I'm hoping we can. Keep going with what we have. For another year, if I, the the software system is bogging us down tremendously. Hopefully, we can either get that resolved or move on to a better system. And that will free up some time. But uh we will eventually, once that picks up, we will have to. Hire another inspector, but I don't see it happening this year.
Mr. Hodges, I think they had set a timetable on that for a ten-year buildup.
That's correct. That that's, uh, I think residential going in first is what I think you mentioned.
Yeah.
And which is software that's bogging you down?
No questions.
We have uh Edmonds, the same as everyone else, it was never designed as a building software. The uh. The effort it takes to get anything out of it is. A lot more than we were used to with our old DOS-based system. We do have the ability to pull plans out in the field, which is nice, but. They still haven't been able to get the customer portal open so that customers could use the. They could schedule inspections online, which would reduce our load. They can check their results online in real time sporadically, but we're having a hard time keeping that open. Um, their system has never been tested, never been run through one side to the other. So they just. When we hit the wall, they just add five more steps and. Every five steps is another five chances to enter data in wrong. Instead of a streamlined system that gets us all through, we've got this rude Goldberg device that. Takes, it legitimately takes me more time to enter results and print a ticket for a final inspection than it does to do the final inspection. For townhouse, by three minutes, I time it. It's ridiculous and it's, it's not getting better, customer service is non-existent. It's, we've been waiting for an answer for three weeks now. Or why we can't schedule inspections on the portal. Instead, we're still relying on phone call. And voicemails. Okay. Unfortunately, the, the reason I'm pushing for somebody to take GIS is most of the software systems I have looked at are very GIS-based, so if our GIS is behind, these systems will not work as designed. So I'm kind of.
Kind of lost me.
Say again?
You kind of lost me in that last statement, we, we have a GIS system that isn't working or?
Uh, well, it's, the information has not traditionally been entered in as often as it should be, that's a full-time job, GIS. Right now, we have Betty, um, my permit tech, working part-time as well as doing other things. But she's not in the weeds every day, no one owns it. So unless somebody owns that, then it's the information's just not updated often enough. I, I, and I could be wrong, I just, at this point, every time I look at another system, the GIS thing rears its head and we're pretty much, well, push that one aside and look for one that's not so GIS-based. But the modern systems all use it. And they're very streamlined, with the admins, there'll be seven permits attached to, uh, dwelling, we have to go into every permit separately to enter the results and save between. Um, you, you can't just go from one to another. It's just, it's, they just designed it as we have a problem, and there's, again, it's never been run from one end to the other, which is, it's been two years we've been trying to get.
Is that something they're still working on to, to, uh, troubleshoot or, or load what you need in it?
Uh, supposedly, but again, we haven't heard from them in three weeks.
More questions? Travis? Bill?
I'll have more questions about that later.
Yeah, likewise.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning reflect an increase for the following. Request for an additional full-time position as a planner, training costs for three new members of zoning commission board, and costs for tablets for members of the planning commission board. I'll now ask Mrs. Graham to the podium.
Good evening.
Hi.
Question? So, so we have, you have this budgeted in here to hire a planner in this budget cycle, so. Um, I saw also in here that you had, um, taken a secretary position to a planning technician, that's also.
It is, um, Barbara's classified as a secretary, um, and she has been doing quite a bit more than just secretarial. Um, and she has expressed an interest in, uh, training. Uh, so we do have her going, um, for some, um, BAZO training, uh, for zoning certification this summer and hopefully taking the exam in the fall.
Is, is that what you, that particular certification, is that what you mentioned and we are paying someone outside to accomplish that, was it something different?
No.
Okay, so the, uh, what are we paying to the outside agency to, for the, uh, review process?
So right now, um, our ENS review for any projects over an acre, uh, we have a consultant that does our ENS review. Uh, Mr. Lewis in our office is working on his certifications. Uh, once he attains those certifications, we will not, uh, need consulting service, he's, he's gotten some of them, but he hasn't gotten the plan reviewer. And he's also, uh, going through the stormwater, um, process as well, so he can, um, be a plan reviewer for that. DQ does it for us now, but.
So about, how much a year are you paying the outside source to review?
Yes, here. Let's just not have it. I think we have fifty thousand, I don't know if it's combined, um, with utilities because they also do our utility review for us.
So that could be a pretty big savings, once he's qualified.
He wouldn't be qualified to do the utility portion, but for ENAs he would be.
And, and how much of a, a wage increase are you asking for this individual?
I believe we, uh, estimated fifty thousand.
And, and what is he making right now?
Oh, not, that was for the planner, um.
Okay.
No, we would want to increase, um, Mr. Lewis's, once he received a certification. I did not put that in there, but hopefully we can.
Okay, thank you.
You have a, uh, cost for a printer replacement, which, can you explain about that a little bit?
Well, what replacement, I'm sorry?
A printer.
A printer, uh, we have a printer in the office that we use, uh, that's, uh, probably, it's quite old and it's on its last leg. But we do all the printing for all the packets for wetland, BDA, planning, um, and other, uh, the historical board as well.
This is the large printer print.
It, it's on a table, it's, it's not one that stands on the floor. But it does get used quite a bit.
Have you checked into leasing one?
We have not.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer.
We have not.
Any more questions?
Not for me.
Yeah. I would just make a, a comment. Please don't cut it.
Okay.
If there's some larger. How many? If there's anything you can find larger, with a larger script. Electronics fine, just that it's really hard to correlate a page back here. On the fly, it, it's very difficult, and I'm sure that younger people.
Why are you looking at me?
No, I'm looking past you. Far more, far better than older folks.
I agree with you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a seminar, you can show you how I'm rolling through this thing. You can.
Yeah, I think this is a good one.
Years, but.
Good luck, I hope you have a lot of patience.
Used it, we'll see how it ever try to walk you down.
You'll be amazed. Okay, any more questions? Bill?
No.
All right, thanks a lot.
All right, thank you.
General Properties Department covers the maintenance and upkeep of King William County properties, which include administration, courthouse, McAllister Building, Station One, Three Sixty Complex, Park Complex, Historical Complex, and Juvenile Complex. You will notice a reduction in salaries due to the transfer of two positions from the general property. One has been moved to the building department and one has been moved to the parks and rec. This transfer between reflects the duties of individuals. If there are any other questions regarding general properties, I will invite Frankie Reed to the podium.
Good evening, General.
Hey. Couldn't wait, could you?
I, I do have one, this might be for a doctor here, we, we've got a physician moving out, but we've got a very large increase in the line for our hospital and medical department is.
We have hired a few, uh, individuals that are having a family.
Going on the higher plan, okay.
Mr. Reed, I know that you can't give me an exact figure, but can you just a gut call on how much you've saved the county by doing in-house work?
Oh, my gosh.
Tens, hundreds?
Oh, I would say up to a hundred thousand dollars at least easily. We say just on the, uh, Three Sixty Complex, where we took the pharmacy and gutted it, redid it, we saved right around thirty thousand dollars for that. Um, another project was the, uh, basketball courts. We did that all in-house and we saved another thirty thousand dollars on that.
Plus Raiders, uh, football field up there at the Shawton Elementary School.
Yeah, we.
Y'all did some work on one of those, uh, sheds also, didn't you?
No, we, we had, I, I had come up with a budget with, uh, cost material, we turned that all to the Raiders. Um, that all got shot down. But yeah, I, 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 there's no way I can put a, a price on that.
I, I can.
But I can't, I can't say that we have saved, gave me a lot of money.
Y'all did a lot of good work at that Parks and Rec bill.
Thank you, sir.
Um, yeah, the only thing that was jumping out of me was that, was that question and, and that being the answer, that's that's fine, but yeah, as always, y'all do great work, I really appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Questions, Bill?
No, sir, I see them all the time.
Well, if, if you could, what, what would be on your wishlist to be able to ma, allow you to do even more?
Um, one thing, we, we, we are dire, in dire need of a shop building. And as far as our tools that we have, we have a minimal enough to get by with, so I would say to do even more, uh, if you looked at the tools and all that we have, it's, it's very mountain, very many. Uh, one of the best purchases we have made was we purchased a, uh, snorkel lift that has saved us thousands of dollars. So I would say, we're, we're actually in the old health department building, um. It was better than what we had back here, but we are working on this right now, uh, the back lot area, uh, we share that with the sheriff's department, and it's a twenty-four by forty building back there, it's two garage bays, uh, the one particular side, uh, previous, uh, director had built a small little office in there that was probably seven foot by ten foot. Um, we have gone and we cleaned that up, we gutted our side. What we're planning on doing, what I envision, Steve and I talked about it, is basically taking that twenty-four by forty garage and strictly making it back into a garage, two bays. But then I've got equipment, as you can see, uh, when you leave here. Uh, I've got equipment that's sitting outside. I am in dire need of a storage build. And in our future plans, the white building is gonna be demolished. Um, I'll leave without an office or workshop. If I had to put one major request, that would be to get us a, a shop.
Any more questions? No?
Well, thanks a lot.
Good seeing you.
The utilities department is funded strictly from the revenues from water and sewer. All revenues and expenses for the utilities department are tracked under a separate fund from the general fund. This department in budget requests includes the following.
Mrs. Brown, I think we skipped over Parks and Rec. I'm sorry.
And she was here first.
Yes, she was.
Parks and Recreation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Parks and Recreation request is level aside from increase for agricultural supplies to offset the cost for upkeep of the soccer field and increase for professional services to cover the my rec website fee, which is based on income through the system. Included in the agenda, agenda packet this evening is a listing of anticipated programs for FY twenty twenty-four. The revenues and expenses are calculated to enable Parks and Recreation to continue to grow and give back to the community through programs, events, and facilities. Now I invite Mrs., Ms. Huffman to the podium.
Good evening.
For all of the activities and programs you have, do you keep a log of who is actually using them?
We do, yes, um, we actually turn those numbers into Natasha each year, um, all of the participants we have for any of our programs, whether they're B-Based or not.
Are you seeing a return to normal?
Absolutely. If not more.
Right.
And many of these programs are revenue, that, they create revenue too.
They do, and then they, they then cover our senior programs, which are free.
Which I'm on. Any questions, Travis?
Uh, no, just going through notes here, I don't have any questions.
Neil?
Bill?
No.
I'll ask the same, I'm sorry, I'll ask the same question, if you could, what would you like to do?
Another park complex with rectangular fields for soccer and football.
You play the lottery.
Right.
All right. Anyone else?
I guess we. I never know if they're gonna be relieved that we don't really have that many questions tomorrow, or they're gonna be upset that they sat through a two-hour meeting.
Well, she, she actually, she actually looked a little bit upset when, when we jumped right over her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Utilities?
We'll start again on utilities. Uh, utilities department is funded strictly from revenues from water and sewer. All revenues and expenses for the utilities department are tracked under a separate fund from the general fund. This department tonight is requesting a few changes, um, in FY twenty-three, King William County utilized fund balance for capital purchase of a pickup truck for the department. No funds are, will be requested in FY twenty-four for such an expense. And an estimated debt service payment for the upcoming water tower project has been included for FY twenty-four as a placeholder under the sewer fund. Now I will invite Josh up to the podium.
Hey. You, you have shade.
Yes, sir.
Wow, didn't recognize. Uh, my question is, it, it is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar fee in there for professional services, is that what Natasha was just speaking to?
Uh, our professional services come from yearly contracts we have with the people that do, uh, yearly maintenance on our stuff. Uh, Bay Diesel does all of our generators, that kind of stuff. Also, our, uh, player review comes out of that as well, for utilities. Uh, we also use it for, uh, the higher inspections that we use for every year, we have to do it on our back loads and when we have to do every two-year, all our inspections on our tanks. So all that comes out of professional services.
The only other question I have, did you shave because you were gonna come before the board?
No, sir, it was my wife's forty.
Thank you very much.
It was my wife's fortieth last week, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I do have one, and why is there a, uh, about a five thousand dollar increase in travel?
Uh, that's going for. Uh, that's going for education. I've got two guys that want to get trained in backflow and get their backflow certification. It's a pretty big certification. Um, that will also be able to help other departments in the county where any other backflows, they gotta be tested on a yearly basis. If we're outsourcing it, we can do it in-house.
But as usual, I think everything in here is funded by the system.
Alright, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
You too.
Now we're gonna slow down probably because it's fire and EMS. So finally, tonight, we have fire and EMS. The department is requesting an increase in salaries to elevate the salaries of personnel working in operations. To a competitive level with neighboring departments. Chief Reeves will elaborate on that in a moment. Also tonight, please note that the funding for salaries in FY twenty-three was not from the general fund, but from the ARPA funds. Which will not be available for the funding in the department after FY twenty-three. Um, that is a um close to half a million dollar expense that we have to keep in mind that that is something that we'll need now to come from the general fund. At this time, I will ask Chief Reeves to the podium.
I think it's four hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
That's correct.
Good evening, gentlemen. Where would you like to start? Would you like to give me a, yeah, would you like for me to give you a little bit of overview on the salary increase request first, or kind of get to the budget?
Yeah, let's go there.
Okay, um, so in twenty twenty-two. Uh, annual year, the county ran approximately two thousand six hundred and sixty-eight calls. Which fifteen hundred and ten of fifteen hundred and ten of those were ran by station one. Um, putting us at around fifty-six percent with uh the other four departments covering the remaining calls. Um, we did a. A a non-professional study with the area. For salaries among several different uh organizations that do fire in EMS. Um, and and we even included Richmond, they don't, they don't do EMS, they they first respond, but they don't transfer. Uh, on average, we're around six thousand dollars beneath um starting salary. Um, and uh it it's it's hard to measure in in the mix of it all, but. I went through uh Caroline County, Richmond, Hanover, New Kent, and Rico, Palatin, and James City. And with the exception of the highest level of starting pay for ALS, um. We are well beneath all of those with the exception of uh Palatin at the ALS level. Uh, we have currently twenty percent reduction in our workforce. Uh, with a steady increase in call volume. We're circling back around where we were a couple of years ago, where we're getting extended response times, calling in mutual aid. To run calls in the first two because we continue to increase in frequency. And with the staff not being on board and they're they're leaving with mostly mostly good remarks. You're just mov- moving on for money. Um, a firefighter uh paramedic spends. Around fifty-eight credit hours becoming certified. The basic fire academy is a total of three hundred and forty-five uh hours. But in in which they have to complete precepting is a total of about a year and a half from. Um, finishing school to clear to operate at on all levels with the exception of uh supervisor. So with all that said, when we start having people leave, we're losing all of that. Interest that we've paid into these folks to educate them and get them on board.
Yeah, what is your proposal for the salary to go to for firefighter EMS?
Uh, it'll be a five thousand dollar increase um for each operational person to to boost them up.
What is it, forty-seven five right now?
It's forty-two five right now. The sheriff's went up to forty-seven five, I think, this year. I think, oh, I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's forty-seven.
Correct. Okay, thanks. Not not deadly.
I couldn't remember the exact number.
And Chief, with the numbers that you're giving there, isn't not true that if you send two pieces of equipment, you count that as two call?
That would be uh resources allocated. These responses are call calls themselves. Not, I I can do it a different way where I can tell you how many times we sent. A an individual resource out regardless of. The the call number. These are called numbers pulled out of the reporting system that we currently have.
Is that is that normal protocol to to send two two pieces out?
It depends on the call.
Okay, yeah, because many years ago, when I was working at Philip Morris. We were closer to a fire station and they would, they were always the first responders for any accident. And as soon as they EMS services got there, they, you know, they left, they they came in to just pretty much stabilize.
Yeah, it depends on the call type. Uh, if it's a traumatic injury, usually we'll, we're gonna get the closest person going in in a transport unit. Um, but and there's a, there's a whole big range of different call types as to how many units we send.
Mr. Chair, also dealing with the city of Richmond, they were sending them because they do not have centrally located ambulance service there.
Oh, yeah, it's it's no doubt.
They were sending the the closest unit, which.
Yeah, that. The fire station wasn't wasn't a block away from from that Stockton Street plant that I worked at.
They generally have a firehouse in every neighborhood.
Right. And and uh Mr. Hodges, I'm not Mr. Chair, I'm Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Chair is on Zoom.
You are the chair tonight, sir.
Any, any other questions?
Do you have in here, you you mentioned it a couple of times, but is it included in your plan to offer that certification incentive pack, or is that? There's something you're putting in our.
Certification.
The certification incentive, you you mentioned it in your narrative.
We already do that. We've been doing that for a couple of years, yeah, ever since I've been here.
Is it comparable to these ranges that you're mentioning in in the narrative, or is it?
No, it's it's fifteen hundred dollars for i- in addition to for an intermediate three thousand for paramedic.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Chair, the dealing with the salary, the only thing I'll say is that. The sheriff's office and the fireman all two, and I'm talking about just the uh. First line, folks should be at the same uh salary level.
And Mr. Hodges, in conjunction with that, my uh great nephew just graduated from King William High School. And he went through the training program at Stafford. And the first thing that he told me, I asked him why, why why not, you know, seek employment in King William? And he said, office too, they pays on much more money. So he's still living in King William. And making that trip, you know, that route, he's.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the the system. It, they work ten days a month, twenty-four hour shifts, so a commute is not that big of a deal.
Right.
When you can make a lot more money. So so not to not be competitive in our immediate area. It's really hard to recruit good people and hold on to.
Right, we all know guys that work in.
We can't be more than Virginia.
You know, just just the nature of the employment that there, there are guys that that do it, guys that do it.
You know, every everything with, everything within a limit. At some point, throwing money at it doesn't necessarily get you there either. You know, you'll always have people that chase a career somewhere else.
I would agree with that.
You almost have to love this place somewhat.
And well, we do have a a group of really good people right now, and I mean, unfortunately, they are the ones that are. You know, it's not the the good farewells that we're looking at right now. So that that's the hard part, is putting all this energy, effort, and money into training these folks and having a two-year investment and then. Like starting all over again. That that's the reason for the request, the the uh suggestion to increase the salaries. Guess, any more questions about that?
Is what it is, unfortunately.
Travis, Bill?
No.
Not used to all this respect from you, Bill.
That's cause rid of distance.
Okay. Next, well, that was a salary discussion on on the same.
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, and intent uh. Intent to file application for AFG grant? Yes, any info on that?
Yes, sir, uh, for the past two cycles, we filed uh for a grant. For the uh replacement of the brush truck at station one. It's in pretty pretty rough shape. I'm not sure how many more times we're gonna be able to. Run it through the state inspection and get it to pass due to all the rust and and it's just every system on it is just in in bad shape. The first time we filed the grant, our feedback was that we didn't meet the criteria to get past the electronic scoring. Because at that point in time, they considered call volume um across the entire United States. So somebody running a hundred and fifty brush fire calls is not gonna get in. So we didn't even get considered. The second year, we were considered. The feedback was it was a highly competitive year. The federal government cut back, but our grant was very, very competitive in that process. And they encouraged us to to re-up if, to try and go after again. The problem with it is. The the cost of these things keep going up, and so this year, we're not asking to increase the uh. Capital that we have set aside for the grant match, but the cost of the vehicle is gonna go up. And but the 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 amount of money that's set in aside in capital for FY twenty-three. We just wanna keep that available in the event that we are able to get that grant, but I need permission. I I guess I need for you guys to approve me filing for the grant, which is uh due on the tenth. So uh, we're prepared to file a grant. We um, we just got pushed back due to time constraints with the the meetings running along and stuff, that's why it's coming to short notice, but.
So you need us to approve uh. Allow you to file the grant.
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Do we need that, or?
It's always a good idea to vote for stuff with all.
I I agree, that that the practice should be that we go ahead and make an official motion. That way, if there's any question, we can refer back to the minutes and see where it was done. So I'll make the motion to author a chief.
And now for discussion. Uh, my question is, how much money is set aside right now?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, okay.
Yeah, and we put a little bit extra in there to cover loose equipment. A brush truck doesn't have a whole lot. But originally, the cost of the truck was low enough that with our match and that loose equipment would would put us in that thirty thousand range. Um, but this would, this would still cover the match and um. We'll, we'll change the version of the truck a little bit, and we will have most of that loose equipment on hand, so that that won't be an issue.
That's all I have.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Brands, could we have a roll call vote? Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Any more questions?
Now, I think as a component of the budget request overall, I mean, obviously the biggest block of that is gonna be what we talked about with salary increase.
I did do a a quick study, if you guys wanna wanna know what the cost would be for the increase above flat funding, level funding. And it would be um with benefits for the salary increase along without Merit and Cola. Would be approximately eighty-seven thousand, six hundred, approximately eighty-eight thousand. That's with the increase plus the fringe benefits.
I get any incentives that you can think of? Tax abatements? Anything?
I I mean, I think the board's done a really good job since I've been here, putting a lot of those things in place and allowing us to, you know, the ability to to pay those out. It's just the bottom line, it's the salary is too much. And we're paying extra for ALS on top of the salary. We have a ALS incentive program um that we can budget for. If people are willing to go from BLS to ALS, where we pay the majority of their class back to them as they go through the program.
Are they, are they able to go from BLS to ALS uh within their work schedules? And are they, are they put aside to do that, or is it night school?
It's, well, they work twenty-four hour shift, so most of the uh organizations that do accredited paramedic. Classes unless you go to a very strict college regimen, they they do an altered schedule for that so that the folks can can get the time in. But you do have to work with them, and and we do. I mean, we we do everything we can to help get them educated.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Well, thanks a lot.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Next up, we have board of supervisors request. Uh, Bill, I don't know where you were. At the last meeting, I'll start with Mr. Moore.
I s- well, that's probably about right, because Stephen, I started with him and he complained I I did it with him and we the month before. So you're probably right.
I have one. One question. Can pickleball be played on a tennis court and vice versa? Are there separate courts?
They they used to play pickleball on one.
Okay, that's what I thought. It said, just sounded like the gentleman was talking about additional pickleball courts, but thank you.
Is that something about converting the pickleball, the tennis courts to pickleball courts? I mean, I know that would cause an uproar on.
I think you guys confused that that's the basketball court.
Yeah, he he did say that, uh.
As I said last time, thanks to the staff for such detailed presentations and uh really helps us prioritize. Things.
Mr. Hodges?
Uh, the only thing I like to add in there, dealing with that, a- and for the chief and the sheriff already knows, this is a nationwide problem. Folks are just leaving for fifty dollars sometime, you know, uh. I don't know how we we solve it. We sort of created it because we we started la- allowing lateral transfers. So we created this monster that we're having to deal with, and and part of it is the economy. Uh, no doubt about that part, but anyway, uh, yeah, it's something we just don't have to struggle through and continue to try to. Get folks in here. That's all I have, and I think we have a pretty good turnout in the crowd, what I can see, but and thank everybody for coming.
Mr. Muskowski?
Well, um, my my request that I keep coming up with, we're gonna get it the next uh. The next work session, which is an update on broadband, so we'll get that. Um, soon, maybe.
Yes, uh, they they confirmed that they would be here for the thirteenth, however. Um, I spoke with them, we're gonna be setting up a a a bigger meeting before the twenty-seventh, which would be. All points, staff, their engineering consultants, everybody involved. So it might be more worthwhile to have them show up on the twenty-seventh rather than the thirteenth.
Okay, would you get a zoom, a short zoom session, just to?
On the thirteenth.
Would it be? Not not the detail that we'd get on the twenty-seventh, but certainly just to, it's been a while.
It it has, I'd like to get, now that we're in it. I wanna keep getting regular updates.
Yeah, and I've been asked a lot of questions about this.
Um, the only other thing I've got tonight, obviously, we, you know, uh, we don't know what our revenue numbers are gonna look like yet. You know, just adding up tonight, you know, we're we're approaching a million dollars in requests. Um, you know, we we've committed to equalizing the rates on the backs of the reassessment, um.
you know, we've we've committed to equalizing the rates on the backs of the reassessment, um, which I think is the right thing to do regardless, but that means that, you know, we're probably going to have requests that we heard tonight that aren't going to be able to be met. Um, and just no, regardless, and we don't know how how that's all going to work out yet, but if a request isn't met, it doesn't mean that it wasn't justified and it doesn't mean that we don't think it's needed. Uh, but we, as always, we've got to do our best with what we what we have to work with. And those are the tough decisions that that we're going to have to make. Uh, I did want to thank uh, every single uh, department head who came and spoke to us tonight for taking time out to uh, to come and explain what your needs are and answer the questions. Uh, and it's always good to see everybody. But we're, uh, you know, we're going to get into it uh, as soon as we start getting some revenue numbers and figuring out what we can do. And I know we'd love to do it all, but that rarely is the case that we can, we'll do our best.
I really don't have any requests. I'm glad we had a nice crowd. I'm glad the good people from Parks and Rec showed up tonight. And uh, anyway, I had some muddy big shoes to fill tonight and I'm almost exhausted, you know. But uh, that that's about it.
Is is there a legal reason we can't go ahead with the appointment in lieu of the call session? Anybody know?
Well, it's not on the agenda, so we have to make a motion to add it to the agenda. There is a small procedural hurdle. And that we adapted the agenda without.
Okay.
Next up, uh, motion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Discussion?
Nope.
Oh, well.
You got that one wrong. A motion to adjourn is always an order and discussion is never allowed. There's always.
Oh, really? No discussion, okay. Well, I did pretty good.
You can see I was watching you like a hawk, didn't know where you were going to slip.
You didn't train, okay? Bill ducked out on me and I was totally on.
We're going to take a bet on them?
Oh, yeah, roll call, please.
Mrs. Galski.
Hi.
Mr. Garber.
Hi.
Mr. Maureen.
Hi.
Mr. Hackett.
He's gone.
Who was it?
Bill?
Yeah. I.